Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, August 29th. Call to order at 6:36 PM. First item of business, discussion regarding town response to COVID-19.
I have no concerns.
Very successful clinic here.
Yes.
The other day assisting with that change in location, which was good. And case counts, I think, were four and two the week before.
So not related to COVID, but related to the report?
Yep.
Just keep it on, maybe for a future agenda, is part of their information is about the ongoing drought and the different levels that we're at and the state that we're in. We may want to look at our own usage, and I know, I think Pete has mentioned that our reserves of water are fine right now and not at all at risk, but just to keep that on the back burner as this continues.
I think we put something up on the website just the other day with like the state information, the levels, ours, Irving specifically, and then just in the county, et cetera. So good information about it for private as well as public rate water. So, but yeah, agreed. I'm not sure if there was something in that first bullet in that drought section that was not in the second sentence. It's kind of ends mid-sentence. I think they drafted this in the memo from Public Health.
Yeah.
Oh.
I thought you were talking about the press release.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was switching back to the topic. Tonight, the first, yeah, the first bullet like stops mid-sentence, and then the second bullet kind of seems like it takes on where that one was, so.
And I can definitely schedule Pete Sanders to be at your meeting if you'd like to discuss, but we are having the staff monitor the well every day for us.
Yeah, if there's not an issue, there's nothing to bring up, but just to, given the state of everywhere around us.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, just to check in, just knowing that, you know, getting that update on our meetings to know, or if something changes obviously sooner, I will communicate that back. Okay. Second topic, review of the town bylaw codification project and editorial analysis. This was the second section we postponed, which was from, I believe, page 98 to the end of the editorial. And we can jump to any sections that anyone had questions about. Or I can kind of scroll through them and we can say yea or nay one by one.
I think we'll just start at the top if you want.
Okay. So the first one was the Board of Health regulations, Article 1 floodplain regulations. There's a question on whether or not they've been superseded by Section 230-411 of zoning. And I don't necessarily have that answer tonight. I don't know myself.
The question is related to FEMA has updated the requirements for each town to have a floodplain section of their bylaws, can be separate in a bylaw or can be in a zoning. You all currently have it embedded in your zoning bylaws. And they have updated the sections that are required to be outlined within the section of bylaw. So Mariah had worked earlier with the planning board to look at some proposed language changes. We met with representatives of the state on that. It's definitely a much more robust section. And so I believe the planning board's intention is to keep it in there, in their section of the bylaw, rather than break it out. So that just raises this question, does the Board of Health need an additional regulation outside of what it will be addressed through planning in the zoning bylaw? I can refer that back to the Board of Health.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I'm thinking, and we'd either defer, maybe the last option, defer into the publication after the publication if we don't hear back in time from them, if we need to move forward. But hopefully we'll hear back from them before that.
I can ask them to put it on their next agenda.
Because that is a multi-page section there in zoning, you know, six or seven pages, I think it is.
Six.
I'm just trying to switch to 30501 in comparison.
I had read all through that whole entire section, and I would not at all be comfortable with making any changes to it because it was too, too many issues and too complicated. And without...
The zoning side?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Without further expertise in it and discussion from the planning board, which is doing zoning as well. And there were a lot of federal rules and guides and regulations that coincided with the floodplain regulations as well. So it's just not zoning issues.
The one outstanding, if my memory is correct, the one outstanding challenge that we had when the planning board was working on this is the identification of a floodplain administrator, for lack of a better term, an official who's designated to respond to issues that come up underneath that, that part of the bylaw. It's pretty much an administrative task, and we don't have a conservation agent. We're not sure who the right official is. We did reach out to the FERCOG to ask if the building inspector, as the zoning enforcement official, would be the appropriate official for this. And they have responded back and said that they cannot offer that service to the towns. So each town is required to identify some official to serve in this capacity. So that's an open-ended question where I'm sure the planning board will need to talk to the three of you to help identify who that, who that position is.
I mean, I think my thoughts on this was based on, you know, six or seven pages of zoning, knowing they're going to look at that side of it. And then there's like three pages-ish of Board of Health floodplain-related. Do they need to both exist and complement each other? Or, you know, do they overlap right now and we see what they say?
I suppose it goes into the Board of Health?
I think that makes sense unless...
Yeah.
I agree with you. Yeah, okay.
Boarding Health and Planning Board.
Okay. 30502, is there an adoption date? Assume if there was no adoption dates on a bunch of these, then we don't have the date, or we don't know the date? Okay. So unless there's concerns, we would continue without an adoption date?
So my question to that was, and you're correct, that there's a number of issues with the bylaws in different places where there's no adoption date. So do, going forward, do we, do we, is, is when this is finalized, can that be the adoption date? Or do we necessarily have to have an adoption date?
There's two pieces of this. Regulations are approved by the board or commission who has the authority to promulgate them. So the Board of Health has the authority to promulgate these regulations, and they could do that at a regularly posted meeting. They may have a hearing requirement, but they could do that. The bylaws have to be adopted by the citizens, the registered voters. So in essence, even though you're going through this section, this 300 section is more regulations, and so they could be updated at any time. And then the board or commission can just respond to the town clerk, letting them know that the bylaw or the regulations have been revised or reaffirmed with a new adoption date. And that could all be reported back to the vendor. So these sections, we could probably update maybe a little quicker. And it's something that maybe I could assign back to the current Board of Health. It's a whole new membership and let them know that these are outstanding questions from the editorial review. And we would appreciate it if they would look them over with their health agents and their council just to say, do we have any concerns that we need to change, or can we re-adopt these? We could do that.
Is that your preference?
Yeah, I just don't want to, I don't want to create more work when there's no need to create more work. I mean, if it's just a question of us as a board saying, as of this date, we adopted this. I guess the issue, the main issue I have is that in the future, when people look at it, how are they going to recognize, was this bylaw enacted in 1920? Or was it...
Or 2022.
Right, right, right.
So how about I ask them to revise or review all of these? And if there's any concerns, work through that process to come to revised regulations. And if they have no concerns and they meet current standards, vote to re-adopt them. And then that would give you that current information.
Sure.
And then it would just be noted in the codification that original adoption date unknown or something? And then re-adopted on X date?
Right, or revised on...
Revised on, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, so I'll follow up with the Board of Health on all of the ones that have that designation.
Sounds good. 30503, this is a matter, and there's a lot of these as well, which is, do we want to list the exact fee within the code? Or do we want to say the amount is set by the specific governing body? In this case, the Board of Health? You know.
Anytime.
Amount from time to time?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't like what, I'm not thrilled with the language that says from time to time. You know, it just seems very loose. But the idea that if you put a dollar amount in there, now we're going back, and we're trying, every time they want to, and it makes sense to change it, we have to go back through now and look at all of our bylaws, which is a much lengthier process than just, you know, an in-house policy.
Right.
So you all, I want to say it was two annual town meetings ago, adopted a mass statute that allows the elected officials or authorized officials to adopt fee schedules.
In lieu of...
In lieu of that type of firm language, and put them on file with the town clerk as the official custodian of those documents. So if a Board of Health was to revise their fee schedule from year to year, which they have the authority to do, put it on file with the town clerk. It's now officially adopted. So if you revise this language to point back to that fee schedule on file with the town clerk, everything ties back together.
So maybe instead of that language, this from time to time, it'll be something like the amount per the fee schedule on file at the town clerk's office set by the Board of Health?
Right.
Or something like that?
Yeah.
At least it's a little more direct.
Directs them back to where, yeah. Okay.
I would just argue that we have to be consistent all the way through this with that, that language statement of, because it crops up all over the place. And it's just terrible.
I think in the first section, I think you were not here that night, but I think you and I, when we were going through it, there was a few that were from time to time or ambiguous, and we set them. But those were things that were more of probably penalties, not fees. So they were more likely to be something that's more static, less often subject to change than a fee. So, but I know we did kind of talk through those same challenges in the first, in the first section.
Right.
With, with how do you set the rates? So are we good with moving towards that?
Yes.
Point it to the town clerk's office and a fee schedule and known, known thing?
Okay.
So you'll update these, right? Okay.
Yep.
Or let the town clerk know?
Yep.
3504, which is the outdoor wood burning boilers. This is an adoption date one, so we'll do the same.
Same thing.
Yep. 3505 is a question of reviewing these regulations against current regulations. Again, it's outdoor wood burning boilers. Since we're going to send them the whole batch and basically say, you know, can you verify these dates, et cetera? So basically, it's the entire section of Board of Health we're asking them to look at. So I think at this point, we'll leave it as do not revise unless they communicate something different.
Right.
3506, private wells, question of updating the citation to a different CMR, which looks like it's either been changed or it was referencing the wrong one prior. I assume no concerns unless we hear otherwise from the Board of Health. 3507, again, private wells, a question of fees. So we'll change that fee language to per the fee schedule on file. If I'm going too fast, let me know.
Nope.
Brian? 3508, private wells again. A reference to DEP private well guidelines from October 1989. Looks like there may be amended guidelines, and since that has been amended as recently as 2018, so the recommendation is to change it to as, date as amended. Again, no concerns unless Board of Health raises one. 3509, that's going to be an adoption item. 3510 is a fee schedule. 30510. 30511, looks fine.
10 is fee in, in the language again?
Yep, 10 is the, we'll change it to the fee schedule on file.
Yeah, okay.
30511, we'll leave as is?
Yep.
30512, tanning facilities, we'll change it to fee schedule and the adoption issue. 31001, Board of Selectmen, mutual aid authorization. No revisal there? I am going too fast, aren't I? 3101 will stay as is. 3151, cemetery rules and regs definitions, references town board. So this goes back to a conversation we had, and I don't remember recall where we kind of left off around, do we want to work on cemetery commissioners? Or continue with ourselves as de facto same or such, right? And you had some recommendations from prior discussions, and I don't think we've revisited yet. You had language in here, right, from the last...
The back page of this packet?
Yeah.
Is, is the language that we had worked on two years ago.
Okay. So do we want to set something for now and come back to it if we make changes?
You currently are appointed as the cemetery commissioner, so...
Right, so I was tempted to leave it as Board of Cemetery Commissioners, number two, which would be revised as two. And then if we make a change to that overall, we, we can come back to this, but otherwise it will stand.
Right. So we're switching it to option two?
Board of Cemetery Commissioners.
We currently don't have a cemetery board of commissioners. We act as that.
So we act, yeah, that's the, that's the issue, is that...
So we are, but...
The town moderator appointed the three of you as the cemetery commissioners.
Right.
But as you conduct that work as part of your regular meetings, we haven't drawn great distinction between your role as the select board versus the cemetery commissioners.
Or the water commissioners.
Or the water commissioners.
You have several roles, but you have been appointed with that authority.
I guess my thought was town board is ambiguous. If we say Board of Cemetery Commissioners, at least it's specific. We hold both titles currently. If we develop a Board of Cemetery Commissioners as that body of work that then is maybe separate or exists on its own, this doesn't change. It just becomes different people, right? Is kind of what I was thinking.
Rather than appointing, being appointed as that, we have the option at that point.
Point somebody else.
If people are interested and said, I really like that idea, and we should have a three or, you know, three-person board, and let's do it.
And then the code wouldn't change.
Correct.
It still references commissioners that...
Okay.
So I'll check on it. Okay, so revised as suggested in two instead of what they had. 3152, cemetery general rules, question about also including MGL chapters 272 and subsection 73B around, yeah, stolen grave markers, commemorative, et cetera. I, I'm inclined to include it unless either of you feel differently.
I as well. I mean, it could be, you could call it out and make it a separate section, but I don't see any reason to.
Kind of seems like they all go together, right? 73, 73B, 74, 75?
Yep.
So as recommended?
Yes.
31503, there's a change in the citation. Looks like the citation is just a typo from 144, it should be 114. So we'll update that as recommended. 31504 is a partial, it's partially a fee and it's partially a change of language. And I think generally, this would be the same, where we'd be moving to a fee schedule on file as opposed to...
Right.
Right? So we'll take the fee out, note that there is an additional fee in the, in the code, and then that it's on file.
So we're going to go revise as suggested with the addition of on file with the town clerk?
Yeah.
Yep.
So can I ask you a question?
Of course.
All the fees and fines going to be listed in a separate section? All fees and fines for all the bylaws and rules and regulations as opposed to...
The bylaws will stay in the code. Those fines and fees. The regulations instead will point to the fee schedules on file with the town clerk per the town meeting vote from two years ago.
So some of the stuff we did, I think, like, I think one comes to mind from a last review is public intoxication. That's a bylaw with a fee in the bylaw. Versus these are regulations where we'll point to a fee schedule on file at the clerk's office. Which is overseen and can be changed from time to time by the governing body. But that'll at least have a static reference to where to find the current fee schedule.
And that was the importance of that, of that adoption that you all did at town meeting was to create a very clear place where these must be filed to be current. So just because somebody's adopted a new fee, but they kept it in their desk drawer, is not a proper notification to the citizens. It must be posted with the town clerk and put it on official file. So if, if the Board of Health was to update their fees for their food establishment permits, that must be put on file with the town clerk's office for it to be official.
I'm just thinking in terms of a non-criminal situation where whoever's writing a citation to, for an individual...
That's all in the bylaws. That's all in the bylaws.
Okay.
And that will stay there.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. As opposed to fees which are more assessed at the time of a service or a license or something, which is more what this stuff is.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Three fifteen oh five. Deals with internment vaults and we have some duplication between three fifteen three and three fifteen five. I'm sorry, between three fifteen nine, this is question three fifteen five.
So I, I, I agree with revised as to suggestion to option number one as well.
I agree. Are you good with that as well?
Yeah, I'm good with option one.
Okay. Question three fifteen oh six, again, section three fifteen nine. I don't know what's missing there, I don't have that answer tonight. I think I need to read that further and or talk with the cemetery section about if he, if the town clerk can dig up anything further on what that language is supposed to be or if the cemetery section knows it doesn't.
So I will send that to the town clerk and the cemetery section and ask for a response. We'll have it for your next meeting.
Sounds good. Unless either of you have a.
I have no insight into that one.
I have no idea what that.
I get why they highlighted it, I have no idea what it means.
Total guess.
Three fifteen seven, so this is fees and charges. So it's just notes that the fees and charges for the sale of lots and interments should be set by the Board of Selectmen or the select board in this case. However. I almost think it should be more of what we just said.
I would say the cemetery commissioners.
Correct. And should be on file with the town clerk's office, right? So maybe point to that same language.
Yeah.
And reference it to the commissioners.
Right.
I, because I assume the commissioners actually are the ones that set the fee if they exist, so at this point, right?
I will give that feedback.
Okay. And then that's it for section three fifteen. At this point, we are running a little behind on our joint meeting, so if you want to.
Pause it there.
Pause that topic, we'll come back to it.
Yes, and can we have a short recess so I can work with Otis to get our guest on?
Oh, we do have.
Absolutely, all right. So we'll take a short recess to get a remote attendee on for our joint meeting and then we will resume and start our joint meeting momentarily.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome back, everyone. Resume at seven ten PM and I will call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee to order. Just make sure we've got our remote participant settled in.
I'm here, I can hear you.
Would you tell him that we can hear him? Or I can hear him?
Dan, broadcasting team can hear you, but we are just getting you up on screen and volume to make sure we can hear you, so as a group, so just a moment here. There he is. I can see you. Can we hear you?
I can hear you just fine.
Nope. One moment. Oh, that would be helpful.
Yeah, on the side of the remote.
Of the remote? Oh geez, okay. Hey, Dan, I can see you, can you hear us?
I hear you very well, thank you.
Okay. We can almost hear you, just a moment.
I can speak louder.
One second, we can, we, we can't quite hear you, but we will in a moment. Dan, can you try speaking again, see if we can hear you?
Okay. Yep, I can hear you just fine.
Perfect, we can hear you as well.
Thank you for setting us up.
No problem at all. So you probably heard just called the meeting to order, so we will, the joint meeting. So we'll jump right in. First topic is review of the STM warrant draft. This is a few more things than the Finance Committee and the Board looked at last time or talked about when we spoke of drafting this in the last meeting. So Article One is appropriation for FY twenty-two expenses, expenses of a prior year. We have six of them across various departments. Total of seven thousand one hundred and seventy-three thousand thirty-nine cents from raise and appropriate. Any questions or concerns about any of those?
None.
None.
I assume the library one is, is an electric bill?
If I could speak, it isn't electric. It was from March February, time when we have the least input from solar and the maximum output because of the need of heat. The bill was missed in February and Brian helped sort out the bill score.
Just a clerical gut, lost in the shuffle there. Okay. Other questions for Article One, any concerns? Does the Finance Committee want to vote these one by one or at the end?
Typically, Joe, I'm as a group.
Okay. Article Two, appropriate for public works, wheel loader. So this is the sixty thousand dollars for purchase and release of wheel loader with accessories and related expenses. Twenty thousand dollars from the Highway Ford F-550 truck special article and transferring forty thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund. And so this is the, maybe the catalyst article that we kind of all have spoke of and this would be to fund the four-year lease.
The only recommendation is in the article information. The question will come up, what's the buyout after four? It's a dollar, correct? I think adding that in there might be helpful.
Right. And I think, I think I speak correctly that that is the plan.
Yeah.
That is not only the option, that is the plan unless something untoward occurred by year four.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That may also come up. Are we going to? Is this a four-year investment? No, we hope it's much more and we'll buy it out. Yes. Yes, sir. Two articles on.
Article five is the four-year lease to the wheel loader.
So Article Five is the authorization to enter into longer than a three-year agreement because the select board only has authority to do a three-year without authorization of the voters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So good with Article Two?
Yes.
Yes.
Article Three, appropriate for elementary school walk-in freezer refrigerator. Twenty-two thousand dollars from capital stabilization into a special fund, which already exists, for walk-in freezer refrigerator upgrade or replace. This is in addition to the forty-five thousand dollars that had already been appropriated in the past. So this is new, this is why, one of the main reasons we invited capital as well to come and look at this. I don't recall when we appropriated that initial money, but it has been a little while.
I think it was fiscal year twenty-two. It was appropriated.
Fiscal what, I'm sorry?
Twenty-two.
Fiscal year twenty-two, we were timing the, we were attempting to time the procurement and the installation for the summer and when the cooler would be empty. And with the current supply chain challenges, foam of.
Oh, yeah.
In particular is, is a challenge that we can't get. And so the construction of these units, they don't take long to install, but it's getting the parts and obviously costs have increased. So we have conducted the procurement, we received two bids. The lowest of the two bids came in at the sixty-six thousand eight-ten.
Excuse me, under the article information, shouldn't it say appropriate an additional twenty-two thousand instead of twenty?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, thank you.
And it should be additional, not addition, I think.
Yep.
So if I'm understanding correctly, it took over a year. Do you even have to go out to bid for this?
We were trying to time with when the actual cooler would be empty. So the procurement was being drafted back in the winter, early spring, timed it for the release. We didn't get bids the first time. We had to extend the period before it closed, re-advertise it again and try to solicit interest in the project. We were able to solicit interested bidders. So when that came in, it was already beginning of July and then it was over budget, so.
Did the school return excess funding this year?
Yes.
If that's the case, how much did the school revenue affect the town?
Works aren't fully closed yet, so there's encumbrances that have to be settled and that work is being finalized this month, so. But it's typically over a hundred thousand dollars a year, so.
Instead of taking out of capital stabilization, what do we, should we be looking at that?
You do not have access to free cash until after it's certified in November.
So could we tell the school to find this within their current budget?
We could ask them to look for it. There's not, there's no way to accurately estimate at this moment what that will look like. And the Select Board already has a conversation with the school committee in the thing column about revisiting the secondary education budget later in the year after the census has been set in October.
Right.
Because there's a lot of unknowns coming out of COVID and partial closures, so. So I guess it's a complicated yes?
Could? Yes. Would it work? Don't know.
Exactly.
I think historically, they return more than $22,000 every year, though. Typically. Typically.
Brian, how critical is, what's the situation on the freezer slash refrigerator? Is it?
It's at the end of its useful life. It's at the end of its useful life. We've been having mechanical issues with it for the past few years, which is why the school brought the request to the Capital Planning Committee. And it was a project that was brought forward during FY '22 budget planning cycle. The challenge is around the loss of insulation. Apparently, it's degraded to the point where it's not necessarily keeping its temperature. And so it builds up ice in the mechanical components. And so it's making the job harder. And so the goal was to replace the equipment, something that's energy efficient, has the appropriate insulation values, and try to get another, I mean, you get about 20 plus years out of the current setup. The goal is to get at least a similar useful life over the next.
Other questions, thoughts? Capital planning, recommendation, yes, no? Yes? Okay. From that source, from the capital stabilization? From the capital stabilization? As written? Okay.
For '22, right?
For '22, yes.
Which hand it's coming in and going out. I mean, it's going to come out of that now, but then after we have free cash and the money certified and move the money back from the school, then we can put some back into the stabilization. I mean, that's how I look at it.
That's all. Any other concerns? Are we good? Okay. Article 4, amend FY '23 Franklin County Technical School funding. So amending Article 9 from the annual town meeting warrant. From, to change the beginning date, which had been July 1st of 2023, but needs to be July 1st of 2022. It's just a typo, but changes when that money is available. So need to back that up a little bit to the year it's needed. So, kind of not. I guess it shifts the money, but it's really, it was the intent anyway, so no concerns, right? And then Article 5. So authorization to sign a four-year contract for the wheel loader. So this is authorization for the Select Board to enter into a four-year lease. For, said, funded earlier, hopefully, because if it's not, then that's not needed. And that's all that we have at the moment? Is that correct?
Those are all the requests that have come in and things that I realized we had to address while we were working on these projects, so.
Are you still looking at 14th?
So that's the second, that's the second topic.
Right.
If you will, which is when. So the moderator is unavailable?
Until October.
At that date? So I guess one of the questions is, do we, we can hold the meeting and appoint a moderator? The town clerk can open the meeting?
I believe that's right.
I believe what legal advised, and then moderator can be, I guess, voted, motioned and voted at the meeting to start.
Haven't we used Mr. Semen the fast one?
Yeah. Rich is unavailable?
We have.
Is that still an option or?
I don't know if he's available, but that process hasn't happened since I've been here. So I've asked council to give us the legal requirements if you're going to do that. So that's what I was illustrating. It's just a formal way. It has to be done is the town clerk would open the meeting and then would look for someone to move someone to be the moderator for the evening. So I would say if he was available and willing to do it, we could plan that and then someone could make that motion to open the meeting. I would say we need to have someone who is, we assume, willing to do that. I would not want to spring that on people who just appeared that eve, or showed up that evening for the meeting to say, who wants to be the moderator tonight? Can someone stand up and volunteer, please, to be, to be the moderator for the night? So I do think if we're going to hold on the 14th anyway, which would be my preference personally, we should have someone lined up that is willing to act as moderator. Someone else wants to, and if there's a race for it that night, then perfect, but.
I nominate Linda.
Can I, can I ask, has, in talking to council, has, has it been bought up that Mr. Sem has been moderator for, for as long as I've been here, at least several times, acted as the moderator when the moderator was not available? But the second question would also be, should we not have someone much more official than that? I mean, in, meaning that that in a case where the moderator is not available, that we already know that there's a second and that we can draw on that person or approach that person and ask for them to be available? Or are they available, rather than doing this roundabout search?
I would prefer something more formal, and I can ask council what that would look like if that's an option.
Like an alternate?
Yes.
That's elected and appointed. Yeah, it's always there. Yeah.
I would say in meetings where Ralph has done it, I don't recall ever having someone else open the meeting and us nominating him as the moderator. He's always just kind of done everything that Rich has done.
Right.
We have done it in the past.
Right. I think we've all been here for it. We weren't, I say we, I think Brian and I both don't, didn't know what the statutes or the legality that covers us doing that, or what the process was or is supposed to be. So we inquired with council to get that information, because we haven't crossed this challenge in a while. So we haven't had someone stand in for Mr. Pembina in a while. So we just asked the question to understand it better. And I'm digging back to find the answer here from the other day. But it's basically what I paraphrased, which is the way to have a meeting without the moderator is to open it by the town clerk and then for someone to motion for someone to be the moderator for the evening and for the body to vote that through to start the meeting. Is the?
I don't really like that.
I, I hear you. I just. Let me see if I can find the exact language there.
Can the moderator himself appoint someone in his place?
I will have official response from council tomorrow morning. I just don't care.
Because like they were saying, I remember Ralph coming up there and there was no announcement. He says, I'm here to take the regular moderator's place, and he just went into it. There was no opening with the town clerk or anything.
I can only tell you that I'm waiting for council.
I don't know why I can't find it, but yeah, I can't find that response, but we'll follow up and try to get further info. I guess the question becomes, are we, what path does the group want to take? I guess it's a group decision, I will say, just because we all are going to be there. And so if we're going to hold it, is that tonight? And if so, are we comfortable, we can, assuming we can find someone who's willing to stand in as moderator, regardless of what process we have to follow to make it so that evening, if you will.
I'm very comfortable with continuing with the 14th. And I know we already have one person who said that they would be willing to.
They would volunteer?
To moderate if needed, so I know we would have somebody on the floor that we could have the meeting opened and we could make a nomination and move forward.
Okay.
That would assume that Ralph Sem, we've asked Ralph Sem, and he's available and will be there?
No, that would assume that someone you know at the table over there just said that she would do it tonight. I would just ask, I know you said that, and thank you, Linda, but do you want us to ask?
I think Ralph Sem has experience.
Okay.
He had been voted in previously as moderator, and so I think it would be nice to ask him and get another person in the meeting.
Okay. We will, no, we will absolutely, that's what I wanted to ask, is we'll ask him and then if he is unable, then you're willing to stand in for us, that would be excellent. Then we will proceed with the 14th?
Yes, please.
Okay.
The one too quiet there. Yeah.
So then what I need are votes and recommendations on the articles and the Select Board to authorize the warrant as amended.
The amendments is around the $22,000 and the language?
Changing the word addition to additional.
Changing the 20 to 22 and the?
And there was one more.
Yeah, there was another one, right?
Article 1? No.
Does that change from addition to additional?
And there was the 20 to?
Adding a dollar buyout in Article 2?
Yes, Article 2. Both in, it's in article information on both of them.
Yeah. And I found the note from legal, and it was, as Brian said, the initial belief was that the moderator statute has the board or the town clerk open the meeting, and then first order business becomes selecting or voting a moderator. But we were waiting for council to confirm that back. They said they were going to look into it. So we are still waiting for, and it was tomorrow. So, so that was the belief at the time. Maybe it is different. Maybe there are other options. But we'll explore those, but we at least have someone and/or maybe a couple of people who are willing to stand in for him, so. So we'll keep it 14th. Just capital, I don't know how we want to do these. Do you guys want to do recommendations on the articles? Or do you want me to try to piece one together for all the groups, recommending all of them? Because we've got capital plan, we've got finance, and we've got the board, well, obviously the board.
The capital plan is only on two of the articles, so.
Can I respectfully ask them to just be separate for each board?
Absolutely.
Meeting minute purposes?
Does anyone like to make a motion in regards to the special town meeting warrant? She's not on the finance committee.
You don't mind?
Is it you or Charlie or Dan?
I'd like to make a motion to accept special town meeting agenda as written with changes suggested. Dan Sisk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So there you have it, finance committee, sir.
Any extensions?
Any extensions?
All right, okay. Thank you.
Now you're on for capital, sir.
Yeah, but I will start.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I will make a motion if the Capital Planning Committee recommends Article 2 and Article 3 for the September 14th special town meeting.
With changes?
With amendments.
Second.
Can I?
Sorry?
Before you call for the vote, can I ask your question?
Of course you can.
Would the Capital Planning Committee want to recommend the authorization for the four-year lease as well?
Yes.
Sure.
Because that goes together.
So may I amend that to add Article 5?
So we will amend that to 2, 3, and 5.
Correct.
Oh.
2, 3, and 5. And then second as amended?
Second as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any votes? Or not?
Thank you. With that, motion for the warrant?
Motion to approve the special town meeting warrant as amended for September 14th.
It has to be posted Wednesday, right?
2022.
Second?
Is he through?
Yeah, I think he is. Are you through? I'm sorry.
I am.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll plan to hold that here?
Here.
At 7:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all.
We will have more seats, I promise. Anything else for capital or finance tonight?
I have a general question. Looking at the Eversource bill for the library, wasn't there something going where the solar was going to be reviewed to make sure it was functioning as delivered? Is there any update on that?
We've submitted the request a second time. The civil engineers were waiting on that response.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. I'll move to adjourn the joint meetings and continue the Select Board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us. We'll see you all on the 14th. Yes, sir?
Jake?
I did.
Scott? Yes, Dan?
Could I ask him to leave the chairs for a moment? I have a comment on something later in your agenda.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll make it brief. The assessors have not voted on requests for a state about a little recommendation for their requests for an extension. So I'm not speaking for the assessors. However, just, just a thought, I hope you keep in mind, they're a big taxpayer. I feel like Bill Rogers always thinks when I read the paper, what it says in the paper, they want extra time to adequately address issues of erosion and other, other things that need to be addressed. Since they're going to have a 50-year contract of license if they get one, seems that supporting their effort to have a few, couple of extra months, whatever it is, to adequately address things that people are concerned with, seems like the town would support that. That's my request, statement of my thought. It's your decision. Do it as you wish.
I didn't, I didn't quite catch it.
So, so he was referring to our last item of business, which is review of the request to support the FERC filing extension request for Firstlight, Hydro, and Northfield Mountain Eelsie. And as I understood it, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, was that Dan's recommendation was to support the extension, being a large taxpayer, giving them more time to address some of the concerns and, you know, about erosion control and things that they need to do for the, being especially a 50-year license. So recommending that when we consider it, that we vote favorably towards it. Correct?
That's correct. That's my thought. It's your decision. Do it as you wish. Okay?
Noted. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Bye.
Have a good night. So we will jump back up to review of the town bylock codification project where we left off. And we were on?
34001.
Right. Jumped right into 340.
Yep. I'm just trying to get to that page myself.
As am I.
There we go. 34001, recycling regs, and they recommended no revisal. I have no concerns with.
No concern?
Believe it as is. 345, definitions, this is sewer regulations. The referenced CMR, they did not find a match, so I guess I would direct that unless you have further information to the wastewater superintendent, chief operator to review and come back to us with what that reference was supposed to be toward.
Agreed.
Okay.
So I will have the superintendent review and offer recommendations, you will.
Please. I had the same opinion on the next one.
Yeah.
Also definitions, a question of whether the referenced CFR, did I say the prior one wrong? I'm sorry. No, I did, okay, CMR. CFR is the correct reference or not, again.
Agreed.
Next one is 345, Section 3, reference to Schedule B, which was not included in the original regulations submitted. Recommendation was if we don't, if we're not required to include Schedule B in the code, have a footnote that Schedule B is on file. To me, this is a fee schedule, so it sounds like we would want to stick with the same fee schedule and the town clerk's office reference. So mostly what they recommended was like the language change. 345, Section 4, recommendation to change the CFR citation, looks like it's a typo, but we should have the wastewater superintendent just confirm that.
Edit.
403, not 5403?
So that's 3454.
34541, yep. 41C. The next one should be referencing CFR subsection 2 dot 302, not 303. We can have him look at it while he's there, but it looked like they were pretty confident that that's just a typo on the 303. And then a recommendation on the enforcement section, Section 6. Currently, it's take any further necessary action as permitted by these regulations or by the town's bylaws and ordinances, and their recommendation is just to strike ordinances.
Ordinances and bylaws are interchangeable, but.
Yeah, they're, yeah. And I think we've done that in other places, so just stick with just bylaw.
Revises suggested.
Moving to 350, subdivision. I'll just say from the outset, a lot of the subdivision stuff came from planning and, you know, zoning stuff. I thought most of it seemed okay, but I would prefer that if they aren't reviewing this along with the zoning section, to have planning look at it, was my feeling, I don't know what your gentlemen think.
I know this was on their list to review, I just, I know that the heavy lift has been the zoning bylaw review, I don't know if they've made it to the subdivision regulations yet, but I can definitely inquire.
Okay, as long as it's on their list to, then I think that's at least for me, what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I think through some of these, they seem straightforward, and I wasn't concerned with it, but just to.
Right.
Just to, you know, note. The first one is just a question of the various forms that are referenced in the regulations, do we just note that those are on, those are available in a town office, and I think generally we would want to lend in that direction, town's clerk's office, similar with the fees, unless there's a reason not to. Second one is fees again, so again, we would want to reference a fee schedule at, you know, set by the planning board on file in the town clerk's office. 350-1 did not, I don't know what you thought about the recommended revisal, I didn't have any concerns, but would want, planning's feedback. Most of it just seemed grammatical.
Right.
So recommend revises suggested, but most planning advises otherwise. Metric equivalent measure is defined but never used. So they recommend deleting it, which if it's not used, I have no concerns.
Correct.
Okay. Again, in definitions, it's like just a grammatical, changing a word of to on, looks appropriate. Third, reference to Massachusetts Department of Public Works, recommendation, or question, should that be changed to Mass Department of Transportation, I believe it should. It looks like a highway and bridge spec, which would be DOT, right?
Yeah.
And 350-3, definitions, it's question 35006. Under that, if the blue text is also in the code, I didn't look, Mass DPW should be Mass DOT, right? So, and maybe that needs to be edited as well, if that's actually in the code, I didn't look at the definition directly, myself, I don't know if either of you did.
I didn't.
Okay. 350-4. Grammatical change. No concern except whether those fees end up in the schedule, not listed in the bylaw, in the code, sorry.
Which one are you?
I'm looking question 350-7.
7, okay.
In Section 350-4. Written evidence that a filing fee in the amount of 65 per single lot or 35 per lot for all plans, including two or more, made payable to town very much. To be grammatically correct, they're recommending written evidence that a filing fee has been paid in the amount, and all I was noting is if our fees are going in a schedule, then those fees should probably come out, and instead be written evidence that a filing, the filing fee.
Has been paid.
On the fee schedule, on file at the town's clerk's office, has been paid.
It could say something like, has been paid in accordance with the schedule held at the clerk's office.
Yep. Some cleanup of that language to match that reference. Did you follow that convoluted attempt at rewording that? Okay. Question 8, 358, just a typo. We are not going to upend it, we'll just append it, that's okay. 3, question 9. I think the recommended revisal makes sense, but again, this one I would be one for planning to review, and ensure that it is supposed to be that a residential subdivision is a may and a non-residential is a must or a shall, which is the edit. Yes, please. Question 10, that subsection, I think that's an L and an M, although it looks like a 1. Oh yeah, I said a subsection, L and M are identical, so they're recommending to delete one. Makes sense to me, if they are identical.
Yeah.
Question 11. Revising, noting that a homeowners association is a shall, not a, it's just, I think it's, excuse me, strengthening it to say shall. Again, I think planning review, but seems to be the intent of the code. Same with the next one, it's some shall language, they're believing is what it is meant to be. Question 13, excuse me, in reference to 350-6, fact that the language covers greater than 25%, less than 25% slope, and 25% exactly can do whatever effectively, which made me chuckle. So I would look to planning to advise which way that should fall, should it fall in the greater or the less than? Question 14 is just grammatical, all good?
Yes.
15 is a shall, changing language to be a shall. Looks correct, but planning, I think, should review. 16 is grammatical. I'm going to assume no concerns, speak up if there are.
Yeah, I will.
Just to keep it moving. 17, again, grammatical, good?
Yep.
18, references an appendix, which was not provided in the packet to the code company. So.
What's that? Send it. Any work on that?
Yeah, yep. Their recommendation was to have it provided to enclose it, but that's not the direction we should go, we'll see what they recommend. 19, this is specifically under 350-8 design standards, this references the board being the planning board, I believe in that language, so I would defer to them, it's not ours to, in my opinion, recommend what their endorsement or not should look like. 20, that's a change from DPW to DOT, which looks to be correct. 21 is a correction on ADA acronym. Which you know, which I believe you would concur, Brian, is the, is correct, right? I'll defer to you, but that is the correct change, right?
Yes. Matter of fact, we'll see that reference later tonight.
Great. Going to make my mind wander, I gotta stick on this. 22. It's a recommend, it's a change from, it's a grammatical change, dropping double, double word, so we'll keep that. 23, the citation is missing the proper ending subs, or ending section of MGL, so that looks correct. That's it for the subdivision section. Moving on to 360, traffic regulations. Public works, Mass DPW changed to Mass DOT. That's the first one.
So can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
This is something that I wonder if the three of you would be willing to pause on, only because the last time these were updated were 1962, and the expectations from federal transportation, state transportation have significantly increased, and in 2009, there was a issuance of updated uniform traffic standards, that they were looking for not only every state to adopt, but then for the states to promulgate those expectations down to localities and towns to work on that. So I would suggest that we should work on a complete revised traffic regulation for the three of you to work on with the highway department, based on those new standards from 2009. I mean, of course, we can update the 1962 version, but I think it's going to be missing a lot of the content that we would likely want in the code.
In, just in acknowledgement of the timeline? Should we?
Differ.
Well, we could defer, or should we review and potentially make the recommended revisions to the existing code, traffic code, regulations, and then concurrently work on the new one? I don't know if we'll have that ready in time to be included, if that won't be a first year, you know, then, whatever, edit.
We were targeting it for probably later this winter, January, February.
Okay.
But ultimately, the decision belongs to the three of you, so.
I know, I looked to you, but it was more of, I don't know which way, you know, I think, are we in favor of reviewing it in general, this question 1?
Given the age of the language, I would be in favor of reviewing it, the only reason I said defer is to ensure that we don't hold up.
This project.
This project going forward, however, if you feel there's time to review it and come back with recommendations and changes, I'd be in favor of that as well.
I agree.
So I don't, in my review of these, I didn't think they were too in-depth to go through real quick.
Okay.
So if you're both okay with it, I guess what I would say is let's go through them, let's note what we think should change within these, and then for this section, if you would let General Code know that we are planning to work on a complete revisal of those regulations, if we don't have them ready in time, that they can continue with this, and we'll provide that as a future update.
Okay.
Or we may have a complete revisal for them before they get to the next stage.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes.
For you guys?
And that'll be for all of your 360s?
All the 360s, yep. So first one is to change from DPW to DOT throughout to, is basically what you recommended, Brian, which was, should we review at all, I'm assuming? You know, parking restrictions, et cetera, et cetera, so we'll, I guess technically defer. Maybe we won't, but we're going to say we're going to defer, if we're able to do it, then we'll revise as follows when we get there.
Okay.
3, which is definitions, it's just a change from officer to police officer, I assume that is good with both of you?
Yes.
Question 4 is around operation of vehicles, obedience to isolated stop signs. And I will defer to either of you, because I have read that old language of second and third cars can follow the first one through a four-way stop and all of that, which is just bizarre to me, so.
Yeah.
I will, if either of you have a preference for which option to choose for now, until further review later.
One more second.
Yep.
Yeah, I need a second.
Yeah, I need a second.
I lean towards option two, but again, we're gonna be reviewing all of 360 anyways. So, it seems arbitrary to try and pick one of these to change it to.
Good, well, we could defer to.
Yeah.
I lean toward option two as well.
Okay.
Everything I've read so far on option two is correct, as the current motor vehicle regulations. I don't see any difference.
I leaned to option two as well, so I guess we'll say option two for now, and we'll work on it during the review. Question five is reference to a fine. Not to exceed $20 for each offense. I'm almost thinking we defer on that one, I feel like that's a little maybe too in-depth for us to just make a decision arbitrarily tonight.
Yep.
I would say the fine clearly should be in line with, with, with chapter 90.
Yeah, and I I would venture a guess that not exceeding 20 doesn't align anymore with the variety of violations in here.
Not at all.
So, I'm gonna say we defer. Because we will revise, but not, not now. And that's it for the traffic section, that's in here. 380, water department regs. Is a question of if whenever should be whatever. I would ask the water superintendent to review if it
Agree.
Makes sense to both of you?
Yes.
Okay. And provide us a recommendation. Question two, this is fees. Fees, fees set by water commissioners is correct change for who? And then, fee schedule on file language, as we have done earlier. Number three. Is a reference to the new water service application, and so recommendations, remove it from the code if we maintain it in the offices, as opposed to having it within the code. And I think that makes sense. Probably just wanna ensure that there's a reference somewhere in there where to get said forms. Whether that needs to be this specific section or not.
I think there should be a reference in the code as to where. So people don't have to search for it or guess to where it might be. If it's not in the, in the bylaw.
We just add, ask the water superintendent to review, it references, specifically it references an attachment one, which is the actual form. We just wanna ensure that if we delete the reference to attachment one and omit it, is there a reference to where to find these forms? And make sure that's in there. We'll review it too, but just have him review it when he's looking at that.
And we've had that before, where it's, you know, on the town website or on file with.
Right. Just so it's not just ambiguous of where to find after, right? So I think remove is right, we just need to make sure, we don't need to make other amendment. Question four is whether or not meters larger than one inch being tested by the owner and results submitted to the water department as a shall is appropriate or not? If it's mandatory or not, which to me, that's a water superintendent question. I don't know if the DEP or the state regs require it, or if we want to require it, so I guess the question is, is it required by MGL, by other statutes, or is that a, we would like it to be required, it's not by others?
Well, it's both that question, and it's also if these two sections potentially are in conflict.
Right, if one's saying shall and one's saying should.
Right.
Right, so once we have the answer to one, we can correct both.
Correct.
And if the answer is it's it should, but we would like shall, then that's a choice we can make, as the commissioners will, to understand that.
Okay.
I don't see an MGL or an air DEP reference, but that doesn't mean that isn't where it's coming from, so. Next, 395 is zoning board of appeals rules. Adoption date's the first one, so we will I guess look to ask the zoning board of appeals if they would take a look at that. Potentially re-adopt. Question two is around forms again, just want them to confirm, and also make sure we have them on file and reference that they are there with the town clerk. Three, the reference looks to be incorrect to a different MGL section. So, want to have them confirm that too, that that is the correct change reference.
Oh, it's missing.
It looks like it's referencing chap, section 21, and it should be section 17.
Yeah. But that's the BIA to revise.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it's correct, but I just make them, make sure they confirm. Okay, that's the codes, chapter sections, moving on to A400, general law acceptances. So this is a list of accepted general laws, and these are acceptance laws from MGL, right? Where we have to vote to adopt or accept. Brian, do you know the difference in the two documents that they reference, those have gotten different packets from us?
As you'll recall from Mr. Newton's explanation, he went through this three or four times to make sure he absolutely included everything, but I do believe in the very first, when we started this project, in the very first submission, there was what was believed to be the all-encompassing town code bylaws, as well as votes that we took at town meeting, and then the regulations that you've just gone through. I think in the subsequent review, when they did an additional three or four reviews of the town meetings, they picked up some additional votes that maybe had not been caught in the first round. And so, my belief is going to be that there was a discrepancy, and that's what's calling attention to this.
Theoretically, second and further.
Should have included it.
Well, second and further were meant to be additions, not necessarily.
Potentially.
Removals, okay, well, I guess we would
I would defer this one to the town.
Back to, to review.
And, and the checkmark that he put here is from the town clerk, so he's suggesting that his responsibility
Oh, okay.
Include it.
That is his, these are his, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, any of these checkmarks that you're seeing in here were done by the town clerk. So he's suggesting to include that.
Concerns?
No concerns.
None.
Okay. A401, special acts. And they had
There was no.
No recommendation, no questions around that section.
So what that is, just for your knowledge, I went through all of the legislative sessions of Massachusetts General Court, and pulled everything they voted on for the town of Irving, and we put them in another appendix. So every time you have special legislation approved, we will just add to it.
Okay.
But they're just, they're what was approved, so it's not, there's not much to really.
It's not really any questions, this is just
It happened.
Record of the action.
It's a record, so we don't lose our history.
Right, okay. Alright. Yeah, so I think summing up the code review so far. Planning is working on the zoning section. We have some stuff from the subdivision bylaw section, we want feedback from them. We have some stuff for the board of health to give us feedback to ensure that that is correct on intent and sections, et cetera, and same for the ZBA. Other than that, I think we've, we wanna confirm that we have all of the fee schedules and forms and things that we are going to be deleting or changing language on, that those are on file with the town clerk. Before we say they are.
Is this all of the codification? Are there more to come?
This is all of the analysis from General Code on where they saw discrepancies or questions around what we have versus what is I don't know, MGL, what is common, what is likely meant, where it was ambiguous, some of the recommendations.
So there may be other bylaws and rules and regulations that they saw no problems with, so we don't see it here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
There's another document that's much larger, which is what the proposed draft would look like in a code chapter section form.
Okay.
And you're right, this document is focused solely on questions around discrepancies, or maybe changes to statutes that would require an modification here, or best practice.
Yeah, we got that, and I think earlier, but we can resend it, the codified bylaw draft, which is the title manuscript, and it's 368 pages, so that was the, that's what these questions were referencing sections of, but, but that's the entirety. That's the draft entirety.
Right.
Of all of it. Which was broken into bylaws, regulations, appendix, that was basically it.
Right. So the next page in your packet was that cemetery bylaw discussion, I didn't know if you still wanted to discuss that tonight, or if you just want me to bring it back in the future?
About officially adopting.
You'd have to go to town meeting.
Yeah.
If that's your intention or not.
So, I'm not opposed to either avenue of changing it or keeping, it's working as it is with us being, you know, de facto being the commissioners. But I'm also open to the idea, if there are people that want to take on that role, they have that option, if, you know, with the language change of creating it, and it doesn't have to be this body. We don't have to be appointed in that role. I think by default, we have been for a number of years. You know, I don't want it to look like we're, we don't wanna do that anymore, have somebody else do it, you know? It's not really a, an overwhelming amount of work.
Right.
But if there are people out there that are, you know, a desire to do it, I would be more than willing to let them express that desire and move forward with that. And maybe it's not bringing it to a vote, but maybe just a discussion point of, we could do this, you know, maybe bring it up at the special. And just say, you know, this was something that could be brought up at an annual town meeting, what are, what are the residents' thoughts on it? Would they like to see this line of work be, you know, pointed to somebody else other than the select board? You look at some towns, they're not the water, the, the select board is not the water commissioners, they are also not the cemetery commissioners, there are different boards for all of those.
Well, and the proposed, I thought was well-worded in that portion to say that they would be appointed by the select board, and the select board may vote to be said commissioner, so that would be in effect, no change to who. We could choose to, if there was interest, appoint others. If there were not, then would, could continue to be us.
And with that language, you can actually, I mean, it would get more cumbersome, but it would be if, for whoever wanted to do it, if you had one member from the community and, you know, two from the select board to fill those roles, then it would have to be held on a different meeting time, and, you know, with its own, own agenda and own.
Right. Well, and when I look at the duties, the one thing I was looking at, I kinda skimmed over the issuing deeds, but again, to your point, that body would issue the deeds, not necessarily at this table, if there was other membership.
It would be done.
So it would be done in a separate meeting, potentially.
That's the one I was thinking of.
And appointing staff, that one sounded odd to me, I, I guess, what is our language? Is there just no language today, and so we?
It's right above.
Well, that's the sum total of it.
That's the bylaw. That's what's bringing you to your attention.
That's what I thought you were gonna say. I was just thinking, you know, we have a cemetery section, we, and we know who it is, we, I, I at least operate under the assumption that that is the role within the town departments that would lend to having that appointment as well, as just a thing. The proposed language is much more specific to say that's a decision that someone can make to appoint anyone, theoretically.
Yeah, and again, that's a recommendation, you can take that language out.
Sure.
I have, I have some, some, some feelings of being unease with, with the cemetery commission. I mean, on one hand, I don't, I, I know other communities have them and do it. But I also remember where we were at, where we were at not so long ago, that it was in total disarray. As to what was happening there, and what was going on, rule policies, procedures, everything was up, was, 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 was not right. And, and so, I, geez, I'd hate to see us turning it over, going to find that, that through many of the boards that we have, have no one who is really interested, or it comes down to the board is ineffective.
Well, given the fact that we have a letter showing, I think, five or six, maybe even more openings on various boards and commissions.
Right, and, and so this is not something that, that I think we should take, take lightly. So, having said that, I think I'd probably more lean to it stay with us for the time being, until, I don't know when.
All I would, all I would say to that thread, I don't disagree with you, is currently the moderator appoints, could appoint anyone.
Right.
Happen to appoint us, I say happen, it's not happenstance, but, but you know what I mean, it could, could be anyone. The bylaw proposes that we would decide who to appoint, ourselves or others. We could always change that recommended bylaw to be ourselves, to be the board it serves as, period. Also, it doesn't, the proposed definitely does not indicate a requirement to make the cemetery commission composition to not include the board.
Right.
So.
It just pulls the appointing, it changes the appointing authority.
Primarily, yeah, defines the duties.
It changes the appointing authority, it gives it clarity that you have the role to not only issue deeds like you do, but also take care of the, the permanent care of the cemetery, which is an assumed duty that you all have, as well as establish the rules and regulations of the cemeteries. But it also clarifies the staggered three-year terms.
Which happens to coincide with the staggered three-year terms of.
Exactly, because right now, it just says there will be three members. Three members of what, appointed for what term, are they staggered or they not? There's no explanation to that, and so you all several years ago, maybe back in 2017, worked really hard to try to get the staggering back on all of your boards and commissions, so that you weren't having full turnover all in the same year, you were doing annual appointments for a while. And again, this one has been sitting with the, the select board for decades. So this is not something that felt like an immediate thing to address, but it is something that has come up to review that probably needs some attention to, to give it some structure for the future. for the future.
So, I mean, you know, having heard that and Bill, your points earlier, I would be fine with moving this forward, it leaves it, you know, primarily status quo and, and with a better definition. And then in the future, if we think that it makes sense to shift that to another body, this language allows us to do that. But for the time being, we can keep it as it is, it still can stay with the board, provided that's what the townspeople want.
Right, I agree.
And over a period of three years, if there was concerns about the execution or the function of the members, we could, the, the select board of that time would have the authority to move that back to them to, to manage.
Right.
If they had concerns over time. Which at least for me feels better than some where we have just ambiguity about if we can do anything when we have those sorts of challenges.
Right.
At least there's a path here. I think we can, we can come back to it again as we get, you know, closer to the annual and review it again, you know, for proposal, unless you do want to review it again any sooner, either of you, or so far good with the language?
So far good with the language.
Okay, we'll bring it back when we get into the annual town meeting review and if anybody thinks of anything or wants to make any changes, just let Brian know, we can put it back on for discussion, or just update it for review later. So in terms of codification, we'll be waiting on those four groups-ish to get us feedback, five, I guess there's a town clerk question there too, four or five.
I don't know if I'll get it back by the September 14th deadline, but I don't think that holds up the town code bylaw portion of this, we're getting ready for town meeting. So.
Right.
So I will reach out to everybody this week, some boards only meet once a month, so I may not hear back from them until the end of September, depending on when their meeting is. But as I get those responses, I'll get them all to you.
But just in terms of action plans, we'll come back to it and probably more likely four weeks, five, six weeks, review the feedback and can make any changes from there to what we've already recommended for revisals.
Right.
Other than that, I think our portion of review is complete for now.
Correct.
Okay?
Thank you all.
Next topic review of a bunch of policies, third reads, first one is review of the criminal and sex offender record information policy.
I only had one change, or one amendment to it, give me one second to get back to where I was.
And this would supersede the quarry policy, just to be clear.
Yeah, it was under section 11 determining suitability, you have a reference to section five using Roman numeral, section V. It should be .05.
That's right, because it's changed now.
It's changed.
Yep.
That's the only thing I found in that one.
Good catch.
I was like, wait a minute, I know it was, it's how it was previously, you know, enumerated with Roman numerals, but.
I have no concern.
Any other changes you want?
I don't have any either.
I didn't have any of that one, other than that.
Okay. Under the assumption, we will likely adopt most of these tonight, do we want to vote them one by one? Would you prefer that?
Yes, I was gonna say, I already know his answer to that, I was gonna make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the criminal and sexual offender records information policy file number ADM-020 as amended.
Second.
With an effective date.
Oh, yes, sorry, with an effective date of August 29th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Review of the drug and alcohol free workplace policy.
I had mentioned something to Brian, or had a question about EAP, Employee Assistance Program, and whether that should be in here, and he had some recommendations that we'll probably see, that made sense, and that it could be a standalone additional policy with other insurance type policies that'll all roll into one, because that's who.
Benefit options.
Yes, things like that, so I was gonna recommend inserting it in here, but after speaking with Brian, I think it'll be better placed somewhere else. I didn't have any other concerns with it.
I did not either. The acknowledgement, just a question, the acknowledgement, is that a on initial employment and at any change in the policy?
That's my understanding, whereas the other two that you issued that had an acknowledgement receipt are annually in July.
Okay.
And I think I actually did make a notation here, hold on one second. Okay, nevermind. I was just making sure that the reference of collective bargaining, because we do have reference to marijuana.
I believe that that's been addressed.
It is in there, yep, I just wanted to make sure.
Good?
Good, yes.
Motion to approve the drug and alcohol free workplace policy file ADM-110 as written.
Effective.
Effective, yes, my brain, it's late already, effective August 29th, 2022, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
By the last one, I'll, I'll.
It's iterative, as we do more of these, we incorporate more retirement policy, third read.
I had a couple of questions. One, we referenced gross misconduct in section four, events giving rise to continuation coverage option. It's about being terminated because of gross misconduct, do we have what gross misconduct is defined as? I didn't see it anywhere in the definition.
They do not have that in the definitions.
And so it's just, it, it, you're trying, it's a very ambiguous term of what, somebody could be saying, well, I don't define that as gross misconduct, it was misconduct and I was terminated, but it's not gross misconduct, and so I should still be able to. And so unless we have that defined, if we're referencing that and we don't have a definition for it, it makes it a little bit muddy. There's a, there's a couple references to gross misconduct.
It's a different policy.
Right, and if it's, if it's referenced anywhere in, in any other policy.
Right, right, are we on the retirement one?
Yes.
I'm trying to look for the reference.
We are on COBRA, yeah.
No, I'm on.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I drop down one extra?
I think you, yeah, because it's not in there. I, I think you're.
All right, I jumped one extra.
You're on the one policy, right? Because I'm looking for it and I don't see it.
Because this policy's only two pages.
Sorry, I was, I jumped right, I jumped right over, it went to the next one.
You want to get to COBRA.
Yeah, when we get there, I have stuff in COBRA.
All right.
Well, that keeps it simple, I had no, no edits to this one, maybe that's why I jumped right over it. You have any discussion on it?
I do not, Bill?
I have no concerns, so we're okay with retirement plan participation?
And insurance policy.
Yes, skimmed right over that one, I was moving on down the line.
All right, I was totally lost.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the retirement plan participation and insurance policy file number ADM-202 as written with an effective date of August 29th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now to what I was saying for COBRA.
COBRA, Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act.
Policy, I like COBRA better.
And that was four.
It's much easier. So there's a couple references to gross misconduct, and I couldn't find a definition of gross misconduct anywhere, and maybe I missed it.
Okay, so you would like to see that definition?
Yeah, and if it's, if it's defined anywhere throughout a personnel policy, if it's defined, I just couldn't remember in our conversations through the personnel policies if it was. If we're gonna label that in there and tie that to benefits, we should know what that is.
Okay.
So would examples of misconduct?
Yeah, and I think, I think most of them are going to, anything you give as a, a list would not be definitive, but it would at least, you'll see not, examples of.
Such as.
Such as, yeah, at least you give a broad spectrum idea of what gross misconduct would be, what the types of.
Okay.
Behavior would be.
Are there other items in here that you would like a definition of?
That's the only one that I came across.
Okay.
I do have one other recommendation, it's just very wordy, and I think you can change it in the very next section under B for spouses of covered employees, trying to be very inclusive when it's himself, herself, themself.
On the where?
If you use gender neutral and just say themself and they, it's inclusive of.
I tried to catch all of those and delete those.
It's inclusive of everybody, if you just get rid of the himself and herself and the he, she, and just use themself and they.
They, them.
And I think that was the only one I saw in that, in this entire policy.
Okay, I can make those changes.
And again, I, I think for the sake of approving this policy, would it make sense to have it defined within this policy, or can it be defined somewhere else?
I think we can do it either way, but if you define it somewhere else, this should.
Still reference back to that, so we should hold off on voting this one until that?
Yeah, I would hold on this one, let me make these revisions and bring it back to the three of you.
Okay.
Anything else on that one for revision or discussion?
No.
Nope.
So we'll bring that one back next meeting?
Yep.
Review of the HIPAA policy.
Looking through my notes, I don't have anything for this one.
I have no concern.
I do not either.
Make a motion to approve Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act policy, known as HIPAA. File number ADM-021 as written with an effective date of August 29th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The ADA non-discrimination policy.
I just had one question, it was referenced, I think this is the one, hold on, let me find it. Nope, somewhere else. It was not the policy, I'm all set with this one.
No concern.
I am good too.
Motion to approve American, Americans with Disabilities Act non-discrimination notice and grievance policy ADM-001, effective August 29th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Discussion regarding town branding and signage project. Mariah, Brian, do you have an update for tonight?
So in your packet should be.
It's the different tasks.
It's just broken into tasks.
Yep.
So we hopefully took all the feedback that you gave us during the discussion, you have Mariah broke, reorganized and clarified some of the discussion and put a bigger emphasis on task one, which was the branding and style guide that would then inform the future tasks.
The only question I had was, it didn't include vets or Zelinski fields, and was that specific, because those will be renovated in the future and this will become part of that renovation?
Correct.
What I assumed, I just wanted to confirm.
Once we have the, the specifications designed for the category of signage is, is escaping me, but Mariah's got it all broken out as to the different classifications of signage, once it exists and the fonts exist and the colors exist, we can take that to any sign maker who's working on that specific renovation project and say, make this, give us this.
Right, and once we're, once we're doing that project, got it, that was all.
That was the reason.
I think we, Bill, I don't think you were here when we talked about this last.
I don't think so.
Yeah, so, so maybe just a real short update. Mariah and the group came back with a really good, you know, summary, which I know you have, of kind of what we did, where we were, what we've done, and now where do we go, right? Kind of took a breather and, and come back to this. And I think we had some discussion around some other examples, the materials and the kind of design of signage that was in the UMS proposal or, you know, review there when they provided, which I think we found was sourced from Burlington, Vermont.
Burlington, I was just looking that up, Burlington, Vermont.
Yep, and so during the discussion, we kind of brought up, like, and it's actually their, I think their recreation department specifically, or Parks and Rec, or it's three, right?
It's three departments, a whole conglomerate of all three.
And so their logo, their signage, the design, and the branding design and style guides that go behind that, we actually found the documents, they're actually online, their entire, entire style guides, and if I didn't, if we didn't send you the link, I will, from our last meeting. So we kind of came back to, in the discussion, just wanting to kind of revisit it from that angle, like, let's take a look at trying to come up with an overall style and design, revisiting, kind of, kind of starting from that point and see what that develops in terms of maybe a, a different result than our first effort. I think personally for me, firms that do that kind of work often can discern from discussions with residents, town staff, et cetera, kind of some of those pieces that make, what would make a visual or an image or a design that, that reminisces as Irving, or we develop one, I think Scott, that was your point, which is, maybe it's a little more arbitrary or abstract, and that becomes something that we make it symbolic to be Irving as opposed to, because Burlington's is, I think, a B with the three colors, and they actually represent the three different departments, and there's something behind it, and once you start to see it and understand it, it becomes, you know, catchy, I guess, if you will, so. So kind of coming at this from those directions and seeing where does that bring us, and so this is kind of an iteration of the tasks that would, that would be involved in getting there. So, good question about the rest of the fields, anything, questions, concerns about this task list?
No, I didn't have concerns, I, I think the two tasks that were laid out put us in a spot where we can actually get a, a design put together correctly.
The only thing that I saw when I was looking through that, and I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it belongs in signage, design and spec, but maybe it does, which is, we talked about vehicles, vehicle badging or, you know, decals, if you will, and how does that incorporate any branding, if it does, you know, potentially? And what does that look like, I know in some places, it's a, you know, it's a round symbol, sometimes it's just text, in, in different towns, about how they mark their vehicles to kind of coordinate with that. Is that a quote unquote sign or decal design that we? Is that a quote-unquote sign or decal design that we would want in the design spec? Thank you, Mariah.
We did include that in task one under the branding consideration, but I think that would make sense to break it out to actually get specs for that, that way we are bringing it to a decal maker, they know exactly what they're doing, so we could add that underneath the task two. I don't know that we would consider it under task three because I think that if we were going to do that, we would go to our typical local people.
Right, right.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Yeah, you say it much better with vehicle graphics, I should have used that word.
It took us a while to figure out how to say that, too.
Right, yeah, I just think maybe adding it in there, and even if it's just one concept of how to implement it, you know, certain groups, police, fire, we may not, we may have to incorporate it with what they already have in need, so we may tweak a little bit having just a base.
Right, and there might be multiple options, there might be one that has a kind of a larger logo, one that's just like a small door decal or something, so, yeah.
So we're going to add that reference in task two?
Yes.
And actually, I was just thinking door decals, so, I mean, if there's something more that comes through the process, fine, but I think just having a door decal to kind of identify the vehicles was my first thought.
That would be for all vehicles in the town of Irving, they'd be the same?
I don't think they would have to be, I think that's something that we could find throughout that process, is are there, you know, there might be different applications that need different designs. Because, yeah, I don't think they would be kind of a one-size-fits-all.
Actually, I have the Burlington still pulled up from last meeting, I just went to my browser, I just was going to comment, so Burlington, their base park rec waterfront
Yes.
is three colors, but each color represents those different departments, and so when it's just the water department, it's all blue, when it's just parks, it's all green, rec is all, you know, kind of this, I don't want to misspeak, orange, red. So the idea that they can be tailored a little bit to the specific department, but they're cohesive with the overall design that we've come up with for the town, so.
But I think what you're talking about is what Mariah also said, is, you know, you come up with a logo or a brand, it doesn't mean that all of your fire trucks now have, you know, that as your decal on the side of the truck or the, you know, the police cruisers. There'll still be some individual markings and, you know...
And they may not, they may be the exclusion.
Right.
It also will take time, like this isn't going to be an overnight change, so I think it could be as we get new vehicles, they get the new decals, and as we phase old ones out, you know, we change things like that.
Yes, my only concern initially is that I would give more weight to individual departments deciding as to what finally goes on as a decal on their vehicles, as opposed to us determining and saying, you're going to put this apartment, you're going to put this, everybody's going to have the same thing.
To that point, there were vehicles that you purchased over the last two years, the departments were waiting to letter specifically for this work to happen, so the department heads are very much aware that this project was put on hold, and they've been trying to navigate that in-between space about wanting to make sure that they're lettering their vehicles appropriately, they understand why we're having this conversation, and they want to have a positive representation, not only for the town, but their departments, so they very much want to be part of that conversation.
Yeah, I think we want to include them, and I also think that part of this is making it clear to when someone is looking at something, whether it's part of the same entity, so they don't have to look exactly the same, but if we can incorporate the same font, maybe it's a different color like you had said earlier, or the same color, but a different font, you know, somehow things look compatible because it's also part of a safety thing, whereas if like someone's pulling up and they have a shirt on that says the town of Irving, you know that they're part of the town of Irving, and if it matches their car, like it comes with a whole, you know, set of information that you kind of clue in. If you're getting something on letterhead, you know that it's official document from Irving and not someone trying to send out something that looks like it is. So I think the more that we can tie all the departments together, they don't have to look exactly the same, I think that that would be not only aesthetically pleasing, but also address safety concerns.
And I think we would, if we come out of this with that document that kind of guides us, then we're going to work with every department to, you know, have those conversations.
Right.
Now that we have this guidance, but it doesn't be all end all, right, and so how does that match and go through those iterations internally once we have it? So, generally, we have to say generally we're good with the task list now, next steps. Are you looking for anything from, what are you looking for, for feedback?
Are you okay with, if we make that adjustment to task two, are you okay with us releasing this? Under, we were going to use state contract, the exact one is escaping, and we talked about it in detail last time, but we'd use the state contract, the vendors who've been selected already through their process, and my goal was to approach this like we do, almost like bid alternates. We would like to understand the cost for task one, if task one is going well and it's in budget and we have the capacity to go on to task two, and the two of you are happy, or the three of you, excuse me, are happy with what happened in task one, we can move on to task two. If there's still money available after all that, and you're still happy with the product that you received, the one and two, we then can commit to task three. So not upfront saying yes to everything, and then you end up with signs you didn't want. Make sure that you all have a check-in point and there's a deliverable at the conclusion of every task before we move on to the next one.
It also opens it up so that if someone wants to only do the design work, and they either don't have the capacity or they don't want to do the fabrication, it doesn't limit them from applying.
And this is not, this would be the design where you, we always have the option to continue on future tasks, not we have to consider the package if we want task two and one, we have to award accordingly, right? You're going the first version.
Right.
Where we would be selecting and awarding task one solely.
Right.
And near the completion of task one, be making a decision whether we opt to continue on.
Right.
With same vendor or...
Correct.
Team.
Correct.
Or to solicit for task two.
Correct.
Okay. Or pull from the pool of task two from before.
You used a similar approach with your design procurement for the Public Works Building?
Just to say it's the engineering design and then out to through bid.
You used it for the library project.
Yep.
So you did different phases, and then there was a, because you've done the competitive process to procure the vendor, that's already been completed, and the option stayed with the appointing authority to transition from task one to task two, task two to task three.
Then I'm good with that.
I'm good.
I am as well.
Yes.
Okay. Do you, just curious, because I know we, Scott and I kind of liked some of the styling, is the vendor that did Burlington on that list, do you know offhand?
I don't know offhand, I can look.
I know you were familiar with them.
I don't, I think I would have noticed if they were on the list, but it's been a minute since I've looked at it.
Just curiosity, more than anything else? Okay. So we're good with, go ahead on that?
Yep.
Yep.
Good enough to go.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. We've still got a handful of things to go, so do we want to take recess for fiber town or do we want to continue on? Leave it to you guys.
Five minutes.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute recess at 8:49 PM, we'll resume around 8:55.
Second.
We probably should capture that, but that's okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back everyone. Resume at 8:59 PM. Next item of business is review of meeting minutes. I lost my navigation.
On August 1st, 2022?
August 1st, 2022.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of August 1st, 2022 as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Microphones please.
Oh, we forgot. You're the only one.
I'm running it, okay. We good?
Yes.
Okay, so just a quick recap, minutes of August 1st, 2022. There was a motion to approve. As written and a second. And I'll call for the vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to vote for, you were not in attendance, I don't believe.
I have, that's fine.
Okay. And I believe we received one of the other sets just before the meeting, but I did not have time to review.
The 15th, I have not had time either.
Okay, so we will pass over the 15th and 22nd. My short-term memory must be going, who said, who motioned and seconded? You motioned? You motioned and you seconded? You seconded.
All the way around, Bill motioned it.
You motioned.
Oh yeah, I made the motion.
Okay, you made the motion, you seconded, just because I don't know if that was on the audio and, because you guys weren't on at that point.
Correct.
And I know Brian wasn't here, so, okay. Brian, just to recap, if you're ready.
I am ready.
Reviewed minutes of August 1st.
What time did you call back the order?
8:59.
Thank you.
Minutes of August 1st, motion by Bill, seconded by Scott, all in favor? Passed over, 15th and 22nd. Moving on, review of FY 22 special articles, close out or carry forward. So recommendations after review was to close out. Three, assessor's printer with a balance of $4,098.12. The ballot counting machine with a balance of $200. And the COA wellness room upgrades with a balance of $9,850. So I guess first, any concerns with those three getting closed out?
I have none.
No. Any other that you gentlemen would like to review from the list?
No sir.
Not at this time.
Okay. And would one of you like to make a motion to close those out to the general fund?
Do you want them individually or collectively?
It can be one motion, just targeting all three of those line items.
You want the account numbers?
Sure.
I make a motion to close out and return to the general fund the following accounts. Assessor's printer in the amount of $4,098.12. Ballot counting machine in the amount of $200. And account number 01-541-912-57800. The counseling aging wellness room upgrades in the amount of $9,850.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So then, everything else on the list, we're going to carry forward into FY 23?
No.
At this point, yep.
Okay.
We can always review at any time, just outside of the annual if needed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Moving to sales surplus property, 18 Pleasant Street and 17 Moore Street. So per your memo, we've have all the authorizations and have completed all of the steps in the RFP and the advertisement as well as the challenge period, I guess, if you will. And so at this point, we have drafted and worked on a purchase and sale agreement for both properties. And so you were looking for us to proceed with. I'm actually approving those.
Yeah. So the three of you have already deemed them, the proposals for both properties is highly advantageous. Having reviewed the programmatic portions, you'd authorize Select Ambassador Ash to work with us and council to work on the next steps in terms of the paperwork. So we've taken care of the DCM disclosure and we've prepared the purchase and sale agreements. And the period of disclosure has elapsed. So at this point, if the three of you are ready, we would ask if you're ready to make an official motion that the properties are surplus and that you're authorizing sale to Obear as the proposer in the amount that was offered. And if you're willing to authorize somebody to execute them on your behalf, I don't know if one of you is willing to do that. But then we can schedule closings and meetings with attorneys and all the next steps.
So Brian, you're just looking for a reading of the suggested vote language on 18 and 17?
Yeah, I think a motion for each of them separately.
Yep.
And if there's one of you who's wanting to be the authorized representative to fill in that blank space that I proposed.
Oh, okay.
I don't mind signing and taking care of that. I'll have availability over the next, should be closed in the next month.
Yeah, my goal is to get this done in September.
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to deem 18 Pleasant Street, parcel ID 4-5-73 as surplus real property and to sell the real property to Obear Construction Company Incorporated of 34-A. East Main Street, Millers Falls, Massachusetts. ZIP Code 01349, having submitted a highly advantageous proposal through the request for proposals processed in the amount of $10,000. And to authorize Select Board Member Scott Bastarash to execute all necessary agreements on behalf of the Select Board to complete the sale.
All those second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
There you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to deem 17 Moore Street, parcel ID 4-5-16 as surplus real property and to sell the real property to Obear Construction Company Incorporated of 34-A as an add-on, East Main Street, Millers Falls, Massachusetts, 01349. Having submitted a highly advantageous proposal through the request for proposals processed in the amount of $5,000 and to authorize Select Board Member Scott Bastarash to execute all necessary agreements on behalf of the Select Board to complete the sale.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Review and issuance of the third and fourth water commitments for FY 23.
Make a motion to approve the fourth water commitment of FY 23 in the amount of $216.14 for final charges at 35 River Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did I miss, I missed the third, yeah. I started with the fourth. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I was, just flipping back and forth.
I clicked it and dropped down to the fourth. I'll make a motion to approve the third water commitment for FY 23 for backflow water charges. Let me get the total dollar amount here.
Oh, 680?
Yeah, see, I was looking at the sum for the amount, in the amount of $680. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And those should be right next to the gentleman.
Okay. Am I missing that the summary sheet is not on the third one?
It's not, that's why I was.
Okay, because I was looking for it too.
I was looking for the summary sheet for the 680.
Did it not get included?
No, I had to look at the body and the text.
The fourth, it's not for the third.
But it's in your pecker.
It's here, yeah, that's why I just looked.
It just didn't scan.
It's really weird, it probably pulled them together in a pair.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
I apologize for that.
All good. Reminder of the public art sculpture unveiling at Riverfront Park on August 30th at 5:30 PM.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
See you there.
The Bad News Jazz and Blues Concert will start at 6:00 PM. Is, um, the artisan going to be there? Okay, excellent, excellent. Unfortunately, I cannot make it, but I'm excited and hopefully it is really fun for everyone. It was really neat.
Brian and Mariah, what does that entail?
The?
The unfolding?
Unveiling?
Unveiling.
So the unveiling will include me saying a few words thanking everyone who was involved. I've invited Carter from First Light to say a few words since they're the ones who offered us the grant to complete the project. I've offered the artist to say a few words, although I don't think he's interested. He wants to let his work kind of speak for itself. If one of you is interested in saying a few words, you're welcome to. And we will have some giant scissors to cut some survey tape. Then there will be lots of snacks from the Irving Center businesses, so. And then the concert will follow.
Excellent. Very exciting. Well, feel free to say words if you'd like. Unfortunately, I can't make it, but we're out of town tomorrow night, so.
I have a mailman that I'm waiting for tomorrow. And the delivery is portuguese, they won't deliver it if I'm not there, so I'm waiting.
Is it like at that time?
As long as that time happens before.
If I see the mail carrier, I'll let them know they got to hurry up.
Before I will be there, so.
It's all on you, Scott.
That's fine.
I will be there anyway, but I just hope it's not late.
Well, the sculpture will be there, so. You can check on him anytime.
I have seen it, it's very beautiful.
Yeah, the highway department's done a really amazing job helping install it and get the landscaping in. I'm really, really excited about it.
Nice.
I gotta say, his work is amazing. That's just something else. It's really cool that First Light sponsored it and paid for it and.
Yeah, and I want to thank all of you for supporting the project and our time spent on it.
Thank you for running with it, because if I recall, we said, if you want to, it's all yours. And I think the results are amazing, so.
It is. I have a question though, is that going to stay out all winter?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it has an acrylic spray coat on it, but part of it is that if it tarnishes, it's kind of part of the piece.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have.
So it's not going to damage it?
Yeah, the artist is going to leave us kind of instructions to take care of it, but really, he basically said, you know, clean it off if you need to and then spray more acrylic coating on it if it seems like it needs more protection. But some of it already has kind of a patina on it, and so I think it'll just kind of continue to look that way over time.
Continue to build character?
Yeah. And the pieces do come apart into several large pieces if we ever have damage that we need to actually have fixed in like a workshop space. So you don't have to like unscrew the whole thing.
Cool.
Yeah.
Thanks, Laura. It's exciting. Hope lots of people come out to see it.
I hope so too.
We have a resignation from the school committee. To thank Catherine Loughlin for her time on the school committee. Unfortunately, is not able to continue right now, but appreciate her time. We have added that to the list of open positions and membership in the different bodies that we have currently. And that went out, that is going out near around town. It went out.
It is going out near around town.
And it was already on the website, I believe.
It's on the website, it went out last week, it's been posted at the town hall, so the official process has begun.
Okay.
And we've sent it to our local newspapers to include if they feel it's worthy into their publications.
Excellent. Look forward to interested parties.
Absolutely.
Review of the request to support the FERC filing extension request by First Light Mass, Hydro LLC and North Hill Mountain LLC. So August 19th, they filed an update with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, regarding the status and asked for an extension to December 31st for the final comprehensive settlement agreement to allow more time to work through that. This is the item that Mr. Hammack mentioned.
Yep.
He recommended supporting.
I thought we had originally as a board consented to the extension at our last meeting.
It was unofficial and we had talked about that, we would be in favor of it to give them more time and allow for it, but I don't think we did anything official with it.
Okay. This is your first time officially seeing it.
But I do, but we did, yeah, we did discuss it and did discuss it generally, I think we felt it made sense and gave the towns more time to review as well, so.
Yep. So included with your packet is a copy of that update filing that was sent to FERC from First Light, just to talk about the status of the project. And then on the page after that, I have drafted something for your consideration regarding the support or non-opposition to the requested extension, however you would like to present that. It's fairly straightforward and legalese, but we can make any adjustments that the three of you see fit.
Is there supposed to be an "and" somewhere in there between the two projects? I don't know what sentence that is, the first one, I guess. Or if it's not needed, I don't know, it just seemed.
It would be between
First Light?
To the come after First Light Mass, Hydro LLC, comma, and.
And, yeah.
We could do that.
I don't know, I'd offer it, just kind of ran together when I read it, but it doesn't, it's not material. Any concerns?
I have no concerns.
No concerns. Just for the viewers, it's a letter supporting the revised timeline request by First Light Hydro and North Hill Mountain LLC. I'll make a motion that we send the included letter to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, Secretary Bozzi, indicating our, yeah, indicating our support of the extended timeline.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the end. Did I miss anything? It's going to be my standing, second to last question, did I miss anything? Okay. Anything for next meeting? Anything for next meeting? So the plan is currently to meet, well, we have it, it's, we have it at 7:00 for the STM.
Right.
For our next meeting. Candidate plan is to continue into the board meeting for any board business after, unless it's a very short agenda, at which point maybe we do it prior. Or if there's anything we need to change or review before the STM, then we'll move it up.
I'll leave, so are you thinking 6:30 if needed, otherwise it'll be immediately following?
Yeah, most likely, as long as there's nothing pertaining to the STM, then the, then we might do it 6:30. Maybe, maybe slightly early, but probably 6:30. Otherwise, it will be STM at 7:00, select board meeting, immediately following after a short recess too.
Yep.
Kind of reset the room and the floor, let everyone. Who does not wish to stay?
September 14th is our next.
September 14th, yes, so we'll go to a Wednesday. And then week and a half, two weeks later, the following Monday. Any, anything else, anything for the next meeting? No, all good?
Good.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.